All right. Thank you all for sticking around. It's now eight o'clock. We're going to take the next 50 minutes to do the forum for the KCK Community College Trustees. Joining us tonight, we have Ms. Kathy Brydenthal, who's an incumbent. Let me first say, the candidates for this position are Kathy Brydenthal, Catherine El Durham, who was unable to be here this evening due to an illness in the family, Wendell Maddox, who's also an incumbent, Levert Murray, who sent her son Eric here as a representative, John J.D. Rios, who's an incumbent, and Stephen M. Samuels, who is teaching this evening and is unable to be here. So tonight, we drew the order for the candidates backstage, so I'm going to give the order for the opening statements at this time. Ms. Brydenthal, you will be beginning, and you will have two minutes to give your opening statement.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Brydenthal, and I'm running for a second term for our Community College Board of Trustees. I have lived in Wyandotte County, in the historic West High neighborhood, for 39 years. My husband's a DOT, I am not, but it's pretty close. I think I almost qualify. I have spent over 35 years in community leadership positions in Wyandotte County, in Kansas City, Kansas, serving on and for nonprofit boards, including some community development projects that I'm very proud of, the first downtown shareholders board, and the district improvement committee, and that is still growing strong, and it's close to my neighborhood, and I feel very good about that. I would say that my main issues with the community college that we need to address, certainly, number one would be improving our retention and completion rates. I also believe that we need to do a better job of communicating with our community. We're in the process of developing a comprehensive community development plan, a comprehensive quality communications plan, marketing plan, and in addition, I think that, obviously, funding's going to be an issue. I think if we do what we need to do with those first two issues, we will have a much better shot at improving our financial situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. J.D. Rios. You have two minutes to give your opening.
Well, good evening. My name is John David Rios, but I like to be called JD. I have had the honor of serving on your Kansas City, Kansas Board of Trustees for two terms, and I'm asking for your vote for a third. Most importantly, you need to know why. Vote for JD one more time. And I think it is because, while I have been honored to serve with six other distinguished individuals, the progress of your Kansas City, Kansas Community College is unprecedented in its history. We have hired the first female and first African-American president of our community college. We have renovated three abandoned properties to make them state-of-the-art technical education facilities. We have renovated three athletic facilities. We have developed a developmental education student support services center. We have established a transition to employment center in our technical education center. We are sixth out of 25, according to the Kansas City Business Journal, among secondary education institutions. We have the lowest tuition in the metropolitan area. We've done a lot with a little, and I will ask for your support to continue that trend.
Thank you, Mr. Rios. Next, we have Eric Murray, and I apologize for my slip earlier. Levert sent his son, Eric, I slipped up on that, and I apologize. Since Levert was unable to be here tonight, Eric will be making the opening statement as his representative, but will not be able to answer any questions or make a closing statement. You have two minutes.
Great. Well, thank you, Ms. Holliday, thank you, Mr. Tennis, Mr. Owens. I appreciate you guys allowing me to speak on behalf of my dad, Levert Murray. To overcome the challenges that the recent economic struggles have placed on all of us here in America, we need progressive, forward-thinking, educated, and independent-minded people to serve on the Board of Trustees for this great college. To continue to build upon the success of this college, we need individuals who truly care about the institution, the students, both young and old, our faculty, our taxpayers, and most importantly, our mission: education, worker retraining, and responsible tax management and tax reductions, creating jobs for our community. Levert Murray has all of those qualities, along with the requisite qualifications, professional experience, and the knowledge a steward for your tax dollars must have to truly make a difference on our policy-setting board here at the college. As a graduate of both Kansas City, Kansas Community College, and the University of Kansas, my dad has a passion for this institution, education in general, our faculty, the community we are here to serve, and our taxpayers to truly make a difference. Levert Murray has proven himself to be a friend to education, and a friend to all in need of education, skill development, and jobs. My dad's vision is that collectively, we can once again make the college an institution of choice for our graduating high school students, much like it was when Levert graduated from here several years ago. We owe that to our students, and Levert Murray believes that we owe it to our taxpayers as well, to let the sun shine in on what happens here at the college. There should be more transparency, and the taxpayers should not have to guess how their tax dollars and the capital reserves at the college are being spent. It is simply unacceptable to refer taxpayers to the Kansas City Business Journal for answers on expenditures, when the Business Journal only covers a small portion of a project on the former Walmart property. So I ask you all to vote for someone who cares about this institution and you-
Ms. Murray, your time is up.
... and vote for Levert Murray. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Wendell Maddox. Mr. Maddox, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Well, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Wendell Maddox. I was born and raised here in Wyandotte County. Besides the time that I spent in the Navy, I've been here. I'm a graduate of Sumner High School in 1965, and I spent four years in the Navy and Marine Corps during the Vietnam War. Four years ago, you elected me to the Community College Board, and I think that I was elected based on the leadership that I've shown in the community and the background that I have in working with boards and serving on boards. It has been really a delightful experience for me. It's been an awesome experience for me to serve on the Community College Board. I'm really excited about the six people that I served with. I know when I came on the board, there was a little tension, and I believe that we have really relieved the tension that existed on the board, and we work as a team, and I feel that I'm serving on the board as a team member. One of my roles and responsibility, other than being vice chair of the board, is working with the workforce council, and that has been very important to me, because it ties a lot of the work that I do in the community. It ties not only in the community, but it ties the work that I'm doing here in the college with the workforce development team. I'm currently president and CEO of United Way of Wyandotte County, and within our organization, we are extensively working with youth in our community to ensure that they are being prepared for jobs. So by working with that group and by working with the community college, we are making sure and ensuring that our young people are prepared for the workforce of today. Thank you.
Thank you all for giving your opening statements. I'm now going to turn this over to the moderators for a series of questions.
All right. Thank you. Unfortunately, Mr. Murray, we, you can't answer for your dad, but I think you could probably do an excellent job. Okay. So maybe he should let you just run and finish. Okay. The first question is, Mr. Maddox. What do you believe is the primary role of KCK Community College?
Well, first and foremost, Board of Director's role and responsibility is setting policy and hiring the chief executive officer to run that organization, and initiating and assessing that chief executive officer to make sure that that person is doing what they were hired to do. Other than that, the policies that we create and enforce are put in place to make sure and to ensure that we're giving our students and our trainees in our tech ed center, giving them a quality education. I believe that's our role. Our role is to act behind the scenes to make sure that this is, that things are being put in place to make them successful.
Okay. Ms. Brydenthal, followed by Mr. Rios. Go ahead.
Me next.
Yes.
Okay. I think one of the most important things for our community college in this community is to continue to be affordable, accessible to all, while providing a quality education. We are not just a transfer institution, a technical education institution, we are also an economic driver and an economic resource for this community. And I think as we train skilled workers, we attract business, we add to the tax base, we increase workers' wages, and we improve the lives of our students and their families.
There's not too much to add to all that. So I would just say ditto, ditto, and we're ready for your next question.
Don't forget, we got to fill 50 minutes here.
I'm sure you'll get your chance to run late.
All right. This question has, I'm always excited with questions on education, especially the school district and the community college, and the involvement of the boards and the trustees. It's always exciting to hear about the future, and this is what our community is really built on. In that same vein, let's think about the STEM. You've all heard of the STEM, the science, engineering, or science, technology, engineering, and math. And we've already talked so much about the technology and all. How is the Board of Trustees, and what is your involvement? And by the way, we'll start with the same order, Mr. Maddox, Ms. Brydenthal, and Mr. Rios. If you'll just answer the question, Mr. Rios. How is the Community College Board of Trustees involved in enhancing that STEM, and what has been your personal role in that?
Well, I haven't personally had a role in this, and we do have board members that are engaged in it, but my role as a board member is to continue, as I said before, to put policies in place to make things happen, and to make sure that we put our staff and our leaders in a position to be successful. And that's about all that we can do as board members. So as far as I've been engaged in that, there has been no engagement on my behalf.
Ms. Brydenthal.
This may not be a direct answer, but I'd like to take a little different approach in that we know that many of our students come to the college needing developmental education. Our Board of Trustees has recently approved a comprehensive approach to developmental education, particularly in the areas of math and reading and comprehension. And I think we're already seeing some of the results of that. I think this can only enhance and enable them to better be involved in projects like STEM, and to succeed where without that kind of personal counseling, comprehensive support, they may tend to continue to struggle.
Thank you. Mr. Rios.
Well, I have attended our Saturday Academy, which is science-based, has students from throughout our county in attendance, and been very supportive in advocating for the funding and continuation of that program. We also have a number of policies that we have implemented in the last few years to be supportive of this. One of the things are, and some people don't know, that we have the only hybrid certification program in the state of Kansas. We have the only WIN technology certification program. These are very important for the future, and in terms of technology. We are working with Google to see how we can ensure our partnership with them to enhance the technology here at the community college, and for the benefit of our students. We also, with that developmental program, there is a heavy emphasis on mathematics and writing.
All right. Next question. Would you support a change in the time that the Board of Trustees meet so the general public can attend easier? We'll start first with Mr. Maddox, Ms. Brydenthal, and Mr. Rios.
Okay. Well, yes, I would definitely support moving our board meetings to a different time of day so the general public could attend our meetings. Currently, we meet at eight o'clock in the morning, and since I work a full-time job, that cuts into my day. So not only do I think it's important to allow the community the opportunity to come in and attend our meetings, and to hold them after hours, I think that would be important. We do, however, we're currently one of the few legislative bodies in the community that televise our meetings, so our meetings are available for the public to view on our Community College station.
I would certainly support changing that timeframe as well. One of the things that's been really important to me and to our board is more involvement with the community and by the community. We, early on, had a community listening project to enable us to hear the honest opinions of our constituents, and to be able to have vehicles to better inform our constituents about who we are and what we do. And that, out of that, we have an advancement council, which is helping us as well. I think any time that we can better inform our community and our constituents, we are building strong advocates for the community college locally at the state and national level.
Mr. Rios.
Okay. You won't let me get away with ditto. So I'll just say that I do believe that, in the last four years, that the Board of Trustees is among the most transparent governmental bodies in the county. We do televise, we do put information of our meetings on our website, we do have the Listening Project, and the important thing about that is, some organizations, you know, go about surveying, and then that's about it. We have ongoing follow-up, and this is essential to a community college. We have to remember "community" in the institution's name, and so I believe that we are reaching out, changing the time of board meeting, if that will be of assistance, all for it. I think that we are a very accommodating Board of Trustees and look forward to the engagement with the general public.
Okay. Sort of a follow-up on that, and we'll just reverse the order this time, Mr. Rios, if you'll go first, and Ms. Brydenthal, and Mr. Maddox. Gotcha. Sort of a follow-up on that. What is the one area, you know, we talked about the community listening project, we talked about TV and whatever, what is the one or two areas that the public most misunderstands about the role of the community college, and specifically, your role as a trustee at the community college? And how would you go about correcting that?
Wow, you put three questions in there, and it makes me the first one to have to answer. Okay.
You're capable.
Well, first of all, the role of the trustee is to advocate for the community and for the students that we serve. Secondly, I think one of the things that has been kind of talked about in these forums, they always talk about the 47% for the unified government, and then the 53%, and so education somehow is the problem with our taxing situation. But over the last three years, it is the unified government that has raised 7.1 million more dollars, where your community college is actually, with all of the projects that we have undertaken, is $22,000 less this tax year than three years ago. Now, I can't brag about $22,000, but it's not 7.1 million additional. And yet, look at the progress. It's through partnerships, it's through grants, it's by the collaborative efforts of your board and the school's administration, working with the community, that enables us to provide excellent service.
I would agree. When I'm out in the community, I certainly get a lot of questions about the taxes and what our community college does for those taxes. I mentioned before that I think one of the things that I'm not sure the community understands is how important we are to the economic development and climate in Wyandotte County and in the state of Kansas. Some 90% of students who attend community colleges in Kansas stay in Kansas. And of course, in Wyandotte County, we hope, you know, to achieve that kind of percentage, because once again, we are really training skilled workers. I also don't think the community knows the success that we have achieved with our transfer students. You know, we've had some of the colleges, including Emporia State, let us know that our students have done better in terms of their grade point average than students from other colleges, as well as those four-year students.
You know, I want to respond to this question in a more fundamental way, and that is, I think the question was, what does community, what is one of the most misunderstood things about this board? You know, earlier, we heard, when the BPU candidates were up here, and one of the things that came up was compensation for BPU board members. I'm not sure the community understands that there's no compensation whatsoever for the Community College Board members. We get no compensation whatsoever. We serve because we care, we serve because we want to use our skills and our knowledge to help students achieve. So as far as any compensation that we receive, there is none. But other political offices that are running in this election, almost every one of them have compensation connected to their role in the community. So I think that's one of the things that's not understood and not known by the public at large.
In yesterday's Kansas City Star, an article talked about the higher education funding cuts being proposed by the Kansas Legislature. The article estimated this would result in a $430,000 reduction in state funding to the community college and technical education. The new Technical Education Center is opening this year. How would you discuss with administration how to handle these shortfalls, yet keep the new Technical Education Center program going? We'll start first with Mr. Rios, Mr. Maddox, and Ms. Brydenthal. We'll pick on you, JD.
Well, I'm glad you read the Star like I do, because I think it's important to be informed and read the local publications that talk about concerns of our citizens. And education should make front lines, headlines. However, it's unfortunate that these headlines continue to be negative news. However, you have a Board of Trustees and an administration who are proactive, and we received nearly a $3 million grant for the opening of our new Technical Education Center. So these cuts to technical education specifically will have a minimum effect on our institution, because we had the foresight to know that we needed to, again, have a collaborative effort, and we had the Secretary of Labor herself come and state that we had a state-of-the-art facility that was a model for the nation. That's what you're getting for your tax dollar, and I wish that the legislature in Topeka would wake up.
Well, I think, you know, JD gave the correct answer to that, obviously, and we will continue to pursue other funding sources, particularly with the Department of Labor, because that is the connection that we need to continue to make, because of the funds that are available for technical education through them, and through our Workforce Development Board here locally, where we can make that connection. I serve on that Workforce Investment Board, and I think because of those relationships we've built within our community, we're able to pursue those types of funding. The government loves to see communities working together, and I think by working together, we showed them that we were capable of managing $3 million in federal funds. So we'll continue to pursue that. We have other opportunities and other options that we can pursue, and we'll do that.
We have certainly been discussing this in anticipation of a shortfall from the state, and we may even see further shortfalls as the tax policy is implemented, and how that's going to affect our local government. And as a result of that- And as a result of that, we have formed a work group with our Endowment Board and our Board of Trustees. I serve on that committee along with Ray Daniels. And we're in the process of looking at ways to expand our funding base, to increase the number of scholarships, because we realize that this is, part of this is going to fall on our students. And to look at partnerships and corporate support fundraisers, and we will be presenting this within the next month to both boards. And I think we are, once again, we're being very proactive in looking at other ways for us to access resources that maybe we have not mined before. Thank you.
Okay, back to a little bit of the misperception, a little bit of misperception. Leavenworth County is included in the community college service area. I didn't know that. And there is a community college site in downtown Leavenworth. What do you think needs to be done to better the partnership between the two campuses and, obviously, the two communities for the college to grow? And we're starting with Kathy Brydenthal, and we're going in reverse order, so I guess that would be, and then Mr. Rios, and then, and then Dr. Maddox, Mr. Maddox.
I know this is always a challenge because our campuses are a little further removed. But we constantly involve Leavenworth and the staff from Leavenworth. As a matter of fact, they've been very involved in the strategic planning process. We have representation on the Advancement Council that I was talking about to make sure that we are hearing from those involved in the Leavenworth campus, and that we always keep them in mind as we do planning. And we're currently, we talked a little bit about this community listening project, we are going to have an update on that, and we have some key folks from Leavenworth that are going to be participating in that, as they did in the original community listening project.
Okay, Ms. Rios.
There's no divide in regard to the two campuses. I would say that the Leavenworth local government needs to involve itself more. And one of the things is, the very facility that we have is something that is outdated. We're outgrowing it, and there needs to be a collaborative effort to locate a better facility. And again, we talk about costs to that. I believe there needs to be a sharing of the cost. Really, it is Wyandotte County that bears the brunt of paying for the educational opportunities for our citizens in both counties. And I think Leavenworth County needs to start becoming a more equitable partner with us.
Very good. Mr. Maddox.
Yeah, I totally agree with JD. I think, I think it is time for us to take a look at this, take a good, hard look at this. I'm not sure how many people have seen the campus, but it is a downtown storefront, and I think that we need to be, if we're going to continue to do this, we need to do it in a much more professional way, in a much, in a, in a better environment. And I agree with JD. We need to include the city fathers in Leavenworth and get the government engaged in some conversations about how we make resources available and how they will make resources available. I think one of the things that's not coming out is that there's no taxes, tax funding in Leavenworth for that campus, and I believe that's something that we have to look at in the future. And I'm not that sure that's something they want to hear, but I think if they want to continue to be a partner, they need to pay their fair share.
Thank you. Okay, the next question is, you have developed a brand-new strategic plan. What are your three top goals from the plan, and what will you do to make them move forward? We'll start with Mr. Maddox, followed by Ms. Brydenthal and Mr. Rios.
Actually, we have two separate strategic plans. We have an overall campus strategic plan, and we have a strategic plan for the board. And I think both of them include a heightened, more heightened awareness in terms of how we communicate, not only within the board, but how we communicate on campus and how we communicate in the community. So I think that's, that's one of the things that we want to do. The second thing is marketing. We need to do a better job of marketing the work we do. We hear so often, you know, we don't know what goes on on the college campus, and we don't know what you're doing. And I think we were one of the best-kept secrets, you know, in the metropolitan area, that what we have to offer here is really incredible, and the opportunities that we have to offer. So I would say that we need to do a better job of marketing.
I think along with that, marketing and communications, which is a very important piece, and there's already some things being accomplished in that we have a new marketing director full-time, and that person is actually already meeting with our combined work group that I mentioned, with the Endowment Board and the Board of Trustees. And really, it's going to be an integral part of how we move forward in terms of increasing the awareness and visibility of the college. I think, once again, the plan looks at how we can continue to improve retention and completion rates, how we can help students set their goals and be able to reach their goals, whether that's a certificate, whether that's a degree, whether it's as they transfer, whether it's part of the Technical Education Center. So those are two of the things that I think are really key in that strategic plan.
It's all about student success. That's, that is the mission of this institution. And that is what is expected by our community, to have an educated, skilled job force. And so the strategic plan, which is on the website, but of course, in old-fashioned JD, I have the paper copy, but, and there's, we're just barely tapping into the content. But again, the thrust must be that our students must have success. And our professors, faculty, and staff must be dedicated to ensuring that success. And not having total student success is unacceptable, and that's why we're going through this strategic planning process. And the Board of Trustees must then find the funding to support this plan so that we will ensure student success.
This next question will be started by, or answered by Mr. Rios first, and then Ms. Brydenthal, and then Mr. Maddox. Given the fact that you're not administrators, you're not accommodations, but you are Board of Trustees, when you're in the community and when people are talking to you, what are programs and curriculum and certificate programs do you think the college should add? For example, is the community telling you, "We want this"? Is the community telling you, maybe the school district is telling you, "We want this"? What is job training telling you? And how do you influence that to happen at the college?
Oh, well, I do want to clarify. I have 30 years' experience in education, and I am very proud of that experience. And as far as the dialogue, yes, I do have some individuals in the school system that talks to me about some things, and one was technology, I recall, superintendent mentioning that to me. And so, again, this has led to my belief that we need to have further discussions with Google. I alluded to that earlier. And actually, what the community has spoken to me about is the need for the, to have classes not just on campus, but to have like satellite sites and this sort of thing. And so this is something that we're going to have to think about, particularly because we're already in the high schools, but our older citizens, I hope that doesn't offend anybody, maybe not wanting to go into the high schools, so we're going to have to think about that.
Mr. Maddox. I'm sorry, Ms. Brydenthal, right. Sorry.
One of the things that I have been hearing recently out in the community is the issue of distance learning. And I know we're hearing a lot about that with some of the institutes of, very famous institutes of higher learning have been starting to do that for free. And what I tried to do in talking with constituents about that is talk about the fact that, I mean, we totally support distance learning. The Higher Learning Commission has 100% approval for our curriculum. At the same time, a lot of the studies are showing that there's also a real need for that interaction, so that somehow we have to find that balance between distance learning and, and interaction, not just with the staff and faculty, but cooperative learning strategies between students.
Mr. Maddox, please.
You know, I think I'm hearing the same thing that Mr. Rios and Ms. Brydenthal are hearing out in the community, and that is more access, especially in the urban core. There was a conversation started about 18 months ago among some groups who came together and started a conversation on creating an urban education center. And I think that's something that we ought to revisit, something that we can get engaged in as a community college, and try to provide some, more opportunities for those who have transportation issues, and try to figure out how we can get into neighborhoods and provide some training and education at that level.
You may have answered part of this, Mr. Maddox, but the next question, what do you see as the biggest barrier for students in the community attending the community college? We'll start with Ms. Brydenthal, Mr. Rios, and Mr. Maddox.
I would say our biggest challenge is the number of students, and it is certainly, I think, around 64% are attending part-time. And of those, probably the majority, and I know statewide it's about 60%, work part-time and even full-time. And their ability to achieve their goals, their certification, their associate's degree takes them much longer. And as we look at funds and Pell Grants being cut, and I believe about 40% of our student population, they are on Pell Grants, about 90% have some kind of financial aid. And as we look at the trend nationwide and certainly statewide, to look at funding in terms of graduation and completion rates, we are going to struggle to support these students who have these kinds of barriers to completing their goals and their degrees in a timely fashion.
I agree with trustee Brydenthal. I would just add, the challenge, we have to, well, one thing that maybe some people don't know is that the average age of a student at the Kansas City, Kansas Community College is 31 years of age. When I started eight years ago, it was actually 29. So the age, average age is actually going up. So it isn't just about, you know, your seniors or just recent graduates. People are unemployed and needing to acquire new skills for the new job opportunities that are coming to this county. And so the challenge, then, is that why we're having to invest in a developmental education center? They don't have the basic skills necessary to be successful at the collegiate level. And so we have to equip them to be able to handle the rigor that is necessary for them to be successful. So we're in, it's a work in progress, but it definitely is an immense challenge.
I think, looking at this a little bit differently, another barrier for, for some people out there, for a certain segment of our community, is not knowing what services and assistance is available here on campus for them, in terms of financial aid and the opportunity to get into our developmental education program that will prepare them for the courses that they need. Unfortunately, the residents here in Wyandotte County make 20% less than people coming in from outside the community. I think the average wage for people coming in from outside of the community in the metropolitan area is over $40,000. The average income for people living in Wyandotte County is less than $30,000. So we need to make that part of our community, that segment of the community, aware of the opportunities that are here. In order for them to qualify for those higher-wage jobs, they need the training and education which we can offer.
And this will be the last round of questions.
Very good. Mr. Rios will start with you, and we'll go with Ms. Brydenthal, and then Mr. Maddox. I'm sorry, just the opposite of that. Mr. Maddox, Mr. Rios, and then Ms. Brydenthal. We've filled out our page here. We're doing little notes. All right. Lighten up a little bit. The community college has recently invested very, in very fine athletic fields. What happened to George Brett Field, by the way? Anyway, sometimes the perception is that this expenditure is out of line with the mission of the community college. How should this be explained to the public, and by who? I hear it quite a bit.
Wow, that's the first I've heard that comment, that it was out of line with the mission of the community college. I think conversely, it's absolutely in line with the community college. One of the things that's happening to us, and we're always asked this question, why are young athletes leaving this community and going to other colleges and going to other institutions? It's simply because of the facilities that we had here weren't up to par, and they wanted to go somewhere else where the facilities were much better. I think by improving our facilities and upgrading our facilities and adding some sports, we'll be able to draw some of the young people, because we want to keep our young people here. If they grow up here and they go to high school here, we want them to come here at KCKCC and enjoy some of the opportunities that we have here.
Mr. Rios.
Wyandotte County does not have to settle for second-best. I don't know why we think that we have to settle. It is totally unnecessary, it's counterproductive, and it hurts our community, and it hurts our students. As a trustee, I want to assure this community that I believe in first-class facilities for first-class students, for our first-class community. Settle for nothing less.
Ms. Brydenthal.
Do I fight? I have heard sort of both sides. It's been interesting, as the fields have been completed, I hear a lot of people, you know, saying, "Boy, you know, I drive by on parallel, I'm just amazed at what's been going on." I did sort of have that question, I think even at one of the forums about the cost. And I would certainly echo what JD was saying. I think that we want to have all our facilities be something that our college and our community are proud of and can utilize. I think one of the things that not everybody understands or knows is that because we've not had the facilities, the sports facilities that we've needed, we've had to go outside of our college and rent places for our students to, and our athletes to play. So, you know, I don't know when that cost will kind of cover, but one of the- So, you know, I don't know when that cost will kind of cover, but one of the things that we did, as we were looking at all of our upgrades for our facilities, is we actually saved dollars when we, you know, when we renovated the, all of the facilities for tech ed. We were going to have to purchase and build a new facility. We've actually saved, what was estimated, $42 million. We've actually saved over $10 million, so.
Thank you all for your answers to these questions. It's now time for the closing statement. We did draw for the order of this, and the order will be Mr. Maddox, then Ms. Brydenthal, then Mr. Rios. And you have one minute to give your closing statement.
Well, I want to start out by clarifying something I said earlier. And that was that the Kansas City, Kansas Community College is the only legislative body or elected body that is uncompensated. And I wanted to make sure that I say the school boards, the USD 500, and the other school boards are not compensated as well. I want to make sure I clear that up because I have some colleagues out in the audience giving me some looks and saying, you know, that was wrong. But so, I wanted to clarify that. But in closing, I want to say again, and where I started out was that was when I was elected to this board four years ago, I was elected based on the leadership that I had exemplified during my career in the community, and I was elected based on that. I'm asking you to reelect me based on my experience now on the board. I think I've gained considerable experience over the past four years that will help this board be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brydenthal.
I really am hoping to be able to continue with a board that has made dramatic progress. And I think this has really been due to the effective governance that stems from us working as a team. We would not have been able to accomplish all that we have without that. And I think my experience in governance and serving on and for boards has really helped me in working as a team member on this board. And I would very much appreciate your vote and support in the election. Thank you.
And Mr. Rios.
I'm a proud citizen of Wyandotte County. And I have been honored to serve you for eight years. And I'm asking for your vote one more time to continue the progress, to not settle for just being good when the goal is to be great. We have enough naysaying going on in this county, in this state, in this country. It's time for some positiveness. It's time for people to accentuate the strengths. I do that, and I want to continue to do that on your behalf. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to thank all of the candidates that came and couldn't come tonight for their participation. Let's give them a round of applause. I want to thank, again, all the candidates for participating and for their interest in community service and their obvious passion for Wyandotte County and Kansas City, Kansas. I want to thank the moderators for their wonderful job asking questions. I'd like to thank the community college for the space and for their staff help on this. And then I would also like to thank all of the cosponsoring organizations and their volunteers. And finally, all of you who attended on a night when it was kind of cold and kind of snowy out. We really, really appreciate your participation and your interest in this election. I do want to announce that the sponsoring organizations will get the schedule of the broadcast times on the Time Warner Community Access Channel as soon as possible, and we will get it out to constituencies and to the public. These segments from tonight and last night will also be available on the KCK Community College YouTube channel early next week. Please remember to spread the word to review this form, and of course, please remember to vote on April 2nd or before. Thank you and good night.